We'll call this recess meeting back to order. Now, what we'd like to do is, I'm going to ask Commissioner Beal to deliver an invitation for him before we get started to have a plan. Then after that, we believe we'd be better off to move up the stairs so everyone can have a safe and comfortable. So, if anyone would please stand.
Amen.
Best prayers. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for an opportunity together as a community to discuss things that's important to our community. And Lord, let us remember, we may have different views and different opinions, but let us all realize where all goodness comes from and where all good judgment comes from. We thank you for this opportunity. We pray for those in attendance here and there as extended family. We pray tonight, Lord, for the loss of our community, of a businessman and his young daughter. We ask that you will give him comfort during this terrible time. And, Lord, we ask for your blessings upon us, to lead, guide, and direct us in all we say and do. Amen.
Y'all turn and face the light, and face the flag.
Betsuitions to the right, the United States of America and the universal republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go ahead and move up the stairs.
Folks, and when you hear me say our invitation, you hear me mention a businessman in town that lost his daughter. For those of you that don't know, Mike Stewart, who owned Stewart's jury mart, young daughter, Kath, who graduated my son Barry, was tragically killed yesterday after he was in a car accident. About thirty come out of Bowlin Alley. So, remember Mike's family in your firm. Remember Mike and Jerry Stewart at one time were married. But this is Mike's daughter before the marriage, so... But it is the whole family, so remember those.
She was nineteen when she...
Nineteen. Well, Barry just turned twenty, so she is nineteen, twelve.
My daughter's nineteen, two-year-old. Hers graduated in 'oh...
Nine.
Nine.
Started camp.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I did have a few quick comments. We've got about thirteen people signed up to speak, so we're going to allow, at most, five minutes. I've got a timer here I'll use. I'll let you know when you've got about one minute left, but I ask you to be respectful of the time for other people because the people that are on the back end of speaking, they may have something just as important as the people to speak for, so let's be respectful of that. First, I'd like to thank everyone for coming here tonight. It shows concern about what's happening in our county, and that's a great thing, and I think that's what makes Macon County what it is. I'd also remind you, and I know I don't have to do this because we're in Macon County, but let's be respectful of each other, be courteous. If you have comments, we request that you keep the comments specific to the plan, not to people. So, if anybody gets far or filled with a personality, we'll ask you to get back to the topic. I know we're not going to have an issue with that. Again, we'll ask you to hold your comments to five minutes at the most, and we'll let you know when you have about a minute left. As far as the commissioners go, we're not here to enter into debate tonight either amongst ourselves or with the people who have expressed a desire to speak. We're just here to listen and gather information. There will be a follow-up meeting, and we will make this official before we leave here tonight, but we think it will be two weeks from tonight on May 31st. But we'll make that official, and we'll make an announcement of that. That will be a time where we will not entertain public comments, but we will have a meeting, and it will probably be recessed until that time, because we've got, after we hear what people in Macon County have to say, we're going to have to talk among ourselves and get this in the best form we think is best for people in Macon County. So, that's kind of what the schedule is tonight. We'll go ahead and get started. The first speaker to sign up, somebody else had asked to speak, and he said he would give up his spot and take hers further down the line because she has another place to get to. So, he's given up his spot, dropping way down into the list, and so the first person we'll have is Loretta Newkin.
My name is Loretta Newkin, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you regarding this comprehensive plan. I can see that a lot of effort went into it, and I can see that with 164 pages that I printed out, and tried to read all of it, just didn't quite get through all of it, and all the hard work that went into it. I also want to say, I especially want to thank the commissioners past and present for keeping our county physically sound. I think that serves us well now and in the future. The only problem I have with plans and the word comprehensive is that plans tend to turn into policy and actual enactment. Having said this, I want to encourage the members to strike all references to zoning and regulations on steep slope. You wouldn't think that I would have to give a history lesson, but here goes. Our founding fathers understood clearly that private property ownership is the foundation of prosperity and freedom itself. For a long time, infringement against property rights were held in check by those who honored our Constitution, common law, and state law. Now, the trend toward a more modern government has moved to take these rights from the property owner and far from the scrutiny of our courts, and have deferred the responsibility to committees and backroom regulators. Anonymous folks, in this case, and I could be wrong on this, and I know you're not going to tell me, so I'm just going to blurt it out and possibly be wrong on this, that this was the result of a survey, and a small number of people, four hundred and something, out of a county of 30,000 contributed. I suspect that's why most of us are here, we just want to be heard. Let me be clear, to use a phrase that's kind of worn out. I am against all zoning and against regulations of steep slope, and it is for a very fundamental reason. Our property rights are derived primarily from the Constitution, the Fifth Amendment, dot-dot-dot, nor shall property be taken without just compensation. Well, there's actually two ways to take someone's property. You can actually take it for public use and compensate them and take the title as well. But there's the other way, and that is taking by public by regulation. It is equally devastating to the person who owns that property. Let me give you an example. If I paid $8,000 an acre for 40 acres, hoping to develop or sell that off in my retirement years, and then you come along and regulate half my property through zoning of some type or steep slope ordinance, you have essentially taken half of my wealth, half of my property, and not compensated me for it through regulation. This is constitutional violation, I believe. Is that the end?
I think that was just a bitch. You got one.
My timing is pretty good, and I wrote it down so I wouldn't get off track. Listen, thank you for listening, and I encourage you to effectively accept the current regulations we already have in place. Our right to enjoy our property is very important to us and also the prosperity that comes with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Next up, we have Bill Crawford with Western North Carolina Alliance. And I only identify you that way because you put it on your...
Yes, sir. My name is Bill Crawford. I speak for the Western North Carolina Alliance, a regional organization, environmental organization that started in Macon County in 1982. This comprehensive plan is a moderate, thoughtful look at the future, and is the work of hundreds of Macon County citizens over several years. The Alliance supports and commends the plan as an example of good government. Thank you.
I will give you an A double plus for conciseness. Okay, next, thank you very much, Mr. Crawford. Next, we have Margaret Ramsey.
My name is Margaret Ramsey, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am not speaking to the details of the plan, but to the idea of having a plan. I speak in support of the comprehensive plan as presented by the planning board, and I urge you to accept it. Have I read the entire document? No. I did go out to the library, and I spent considerable time with it, and I was impressed. It's an amazing testimonial for the dedication and the hard work of the planning committee and all the subcommittees, and, of course, it represents untold powers. These members represent a diverse cross-section of our county. I think it's an excellent committee, and the subcommittees are even more diverse. They also made every effort to get total public input. They had community meetings, they had surveys, they had... We had opportunities. I've lived in Macon County all my life, and, believe me, that's a lot of years. Through those years, I have seen unbelievable change in Macon County. Most of that change has been exciting and beneficial, even though at times it seemed hard. An example of some that was good but hard, we all enjoy US 64, and remember when it was surveyed and widened, well, on the final survey of that road, there was a survey state at the end of the house that I grew up in and that my mother still lived in, and it said median centerline. You can't get hit much more squarely than that. That was hard, but we needed the road, and it was good. And I have learned that as long as we live in communities, there will have to be some private sacrifice for the public good. As I said, most of the change has been good, but some of it makes me want to cry, and the worst of that is the willful destruction of our mountainsides. We know change is going to continue to happen at an even more rapid pace, but I say that we cannot just let it happen anymore. The adoption of these guidelines will provide a roadmap for the future. Now, we all know that if we have a roadmap, or even if the GPS voice is telling us where to go, we don't have to follow that. We have the right to take any detours that we might want to take. But having a map shows us where we are, and it shows us where those detours might end up. It's important to have a map. It would be impossible for each one of us to do the research and documentation that is contained in this plan. You appointed a capable planning committee to carry out this mission, and they have done their job. I have known and worked with many of them for many years, and I have the highest regard and respect for their integrity, their ability to carry out their assignments, and for their love for and dedication to Macon County. I commend the committee for this impressive work, and I urge you to adopt their presence. Thank you.
Next, we have Don Swanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I too would like to voice my appreciation on the good work you all did on this next year's budget and finances in general. And I think the county is very thankful that you've held the line and done a good job. To the subject, us old folks aren't good for much anymore, so we spend a lot of time reminiscing about the good old days. One in particular sticks in my mind. It was on January 19th, 2001, when the people of Macon County spoke and told the government that interference with our property rights would not be tolerated. For those of you who weren't there to see it, there was an information meeting at the Community Facilities Building. It had to do with 100-plus pages proposed ordinance that was way over the top, and the people knew it. We had to have two meetings that night. The people stood shoulder to shoulder in the large meeting room. We had had two seedings. The halls were packed with people. The front lawn was packed with people. Some of those folks never got in the front door. The sheriff was out on 441 with some of his deputies waving people away because there was no more room inland, no more room to park, and it was a night for the people. I had the privilege of collecting signatures on a petition outside the doors and had an opportunity to meet some of the Maconians for the first time. These are people who are very protective of their property rights, who are very protective of their property rights then, and I'm sure they're just as protective now. Surely, there are areas of improvement that are needed, but 164 pages is overdoing it. When the people of... When the People's Republic of Jackson County can do a plan in 50-some-odd pages, I think we can do better than 164. I realize this is just a plan, but a plan mystically turns into an ordinance, and I hope that doesn't happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Next, we have Vic Drummond.
I'd like to thank you very much for hosting this public hearing and allowing the citizens in the county to express their input on the proposed comprehensive plan, and I'd also like to thank all of those people that invested a lot of time over the past two years to write this plan. I have a list of over 20 items from the plan that I'd like to comment on. Obviously, I can't do that in a couple minutes, and I won't bore you, so I'll mention just a couple of those items. I would request that since this plan took over two years to develop and contains so much information and so many recommendations, that you not rush your approval process before it is thoroughly reviewed by the public, possibly allowing the public an opportunity to supply you written comments over a short period of time before you take any action. I had an opportunity over the past several days to review the completed Jackson County land development plan. I thought it was a very well-done document, which laid out many of the same visions that are in the Macon County Comprehensive Plan. The Jackson Plan is in stark contrast to the Macon Plan in both link, 44 versus 133 pages not counting the appendices, and in presentation. The Jackson Plan laid out their vision and direction without all the specific recommendations in the Macon Plan. A Jackson-type plan would have been my preference for our plan. I feel the Macon County Plan proposes too many goals and recommendations of special interest groups within the county. In some places, it discusses items that should be the responsibility of the county manager and department heads, or the school board, or are not government responsibilities. Population trends are reported starting on page 42 of the plan. I realize this document has been in the works for over two years, but I believe some of the population projections for the next 20 years are overstating. Figure P3 lists beginning and ending populations over 10-year time periods. Checking the same data source yesterday, which is the Office of State Budget and Management, projections of growth are significantly lower now than pre-indicated in the plan. Similar numbers are used elsewhere in the plan and should be reviewed. I would suggest that the dates, as well as the sources of all statistical data, should be indicated in the plan. Last, I believe this board is in a rush to adopt this Comprehensive Plan because of the reported linkage to the still-being-developed Comprehensive Transportation Plan. I'm not a lawyer, but reading the state statutes does not convince me there is a linkage between the two plans. Perhaps the county's attorney will review the statutes. This Comprehensive Plan needs to be right, and I hope the board will allow time for the full consideration of today's input and modifications to the proposed plan as necessary and make it truly representative of the goals and the authority of the Macon County residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Drummond. Next, we have Mr. Alan Allman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. At our community meetings, and I can speak to the Learning Town because I've attended that, and in talking to planning board members and some of the commissioners, I think there's some misunderstanding in what's required in the plan in order to get the plan. So, I went looking, and the previous speaker mentioned that there was statutes that govern this thing. And I went to DOT because I was told that DOT required this plan. It was a must. I was told by other people at some of the meetings that without this, you would be short-funding, or the state DOT could withhold funding for projects. And in looking at this, I guess that's what motivated me to dig into it a little bit because I couldn't believe that DOT was interested in a childcare plan. I didn't think they would require something like that. In discussions yesterday with the Division 14 DOT people, Mr. Joel Setzer, he gave me the statute that governs this, and what we've been told is required here, the statute doesn't require it. Statute GS 136-66.2 is the statute that governs this. And there's two sections of the statute that you can break it down to, municipalities and counties. I'd like to read this in there so I don't take anything out of context. Each municipality not located in a metropolitan planning organization, as recognized by 136-200, with the cooperation of the Department of Transportation, shall, the word "shall," develop a comprehensive transportation plan that will serve present and anticipate travel demand in and around the municipality. Only travel problems or travel demand is all that require that. And it says "shall," so it is required for the municipality. The plan should be based on best information available, included but not limited to population growth, economic conditions and prospects, pattern of land development. And here, it doesn't speak of land use plan. It speaks of land development plan. Big difference, huge difference. So, that's the statute for municipalities. Section B1, the Department of Transportation may participate in the development and adoption of a transportation plan or updated transportation plan when all local governments within the area cover have adopted land development plans. In other words, if you've got a comprehensive plan, they will help you by adopting a comprehensive transportation plan. In section B3, this is one that contains counties, and it says, "Each county with the cooperation of the Department of Transportation may," not "shall," "may" develop a comprehensive transportation plan utilizing the procedures specified for municipalities." In other words, it's optional. You can choose the one for municipalities, or you can choose one of their other options here. A of this section, in section A of this section, "The plan may be adopted by both the governing body of the county and the Department of Transportation for portions of a county located with an MPO, which we're not involved with. The development of a comprehensive transportation plan shall take place through the Metropolitan Planning Organization." That part doesn't affect us. In each of these sections, each section is closed by a comment that I find interesting. It says, "At the request of the local jurisdiction, the department may review and provide comments on the plan, but shall not provide approval of the land development plan. Therefore, if you're in a municipality, it says "shall," you've got to do it. If you're in a county, it says "may," which means it's optional. As far as funding for roads or prioritizing or getting projects on the TIP, it is nothing in the statute out there. In talking to the DOT, two people at Division 14, they don't require it, and as a matter of fact, nothing that's done in the plan affects the funding of the transportation program. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Tinsley, and I grew up on a dairy farm in the Carticake Jake community here in Macon County. I too would like to thank local leaders and the planning board. This shows such foresight and responsibility and just care for all of us that you've shown in the development of this document. For me, it's one of the most important things ever to come before the commissioners. I'm particularly interested in this plan as it refers to and is related to agriculture, to land and water. As a former educator, I'm very interested in what it has to say about our children and our youth. All the sections seem to me to be very pertinent and to be a commitment to all of our citizens' well-being. As elected leaders, I very much urge you to adopt this Comprehensive Plan. I know that the work of planning is ongoing. It is not that revisions and changes are always needed, but I'm sure that this is a step in the right direction. It's a strong break step in the right direction for all of us, and I urge you to adopt this Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tinsley. Next, we have Mr. Bill Burr.
Thanks for the opportunity, Mr. Dean. I guess I'm going to start out by saying, making it abundantly clear, that I support planning, planning for sewer and water. Smart thing to do, planning to accommodate growth. You got into business for 37 years. You don't stay, survive for 37 years without doing some planning. I think we could have had a good plan here. I know there's a lot of good information in there. I have to commend the people who put it together, whoever that was. They did a great job. But to be perfectly honest with you, it scares the bejeebies out of this boy. I want to read you something. I started reading that thing, and on page two, it says, "A comprehensive plan is the formal document that identifies goals for growth and sets the context for regulation." That was a statement that was made by Vicki Green, the Southwestern Commission. This is supposed to be a transportation plan. Now, it was interesting what Mr. Allman had brought up. I didn't know that you could get by without the other. I guess my question is, you know, when I'm planning something, if I'm planning a marketing campaign or something, I don't include remodeling my bathrooms and moving my shop around or whatever happens to be. This has got land use provisions. Let's get really, really honest with each other, and that is just the new word for zoning. It calls for the creation of steep slope ordinance. We already know it's out there. That maybe, I don't know what the Lord is doing in there, but that thing needs to get out. That maybe, I don't know what the law is doing in there, but that thing needs to get out. It's a separate issue. If you want to handle it that way, that's, that's, that's the way it should be done. That, bringing that steep slope thing in here would also bring back the slope movement hazard maps, which as we all know were removed at somebody's order last, I guess it was probably in the fall or so, removed from the Macon County website. So there must be a problem with them somewhere. This calls for the creation of a stormwater runoff ordinance. Every time we do one of these things, we've got to have people, excuse me, that can go out there and enforce it. That costs taxpayer money. Also addressed in there was housing, agriculture, healthcare, childcare, senior citizens, recreation, education. And when we got there, I got the education. I said, wait a minute, I only have a school board draft. I think they take care of that stuff. I might be wrong. Pages and pages of recommendations. And I came away thinking, this is just chock full of hidden agendas. If you support this as it's written, then basically, in my view, you are supporting those, those efforts and recommendations from steep slope and all that stuff that I just put in there. I don't see that this has any, any place in a transportation plan. It's not required. As I believe as Mr. Drummond said earlier, Macon County has a hundred and sixty-four page plan. It's loaded up with all kinds of recommendations and things that have nothing at all to do with transportation. Jackson County has fifty-six pages, and I'm counting full pages. He did appendices or whatever. Jackson County has just kind of like generalized goals. It's bare bones. I spoke with Orion Sherby at the Southwestern Commission, and he said that Jackson County had a bare bones plan that was sufficient, and it did the job. Keep seeing in the paper and keep hearing, this plan is non-regulatory, non-regulatory, non-regulatory. I say great. Then you also have no problem taking out some of the junk in there that doesn't need to be there. Let's do a bare bones plan. Let's get a good plan that has to do with transportation. Let's eliminate all the hidden agenda stuff. If I, one other thing I'd like to say in closing, and that is, I don't need to tell you folks, man, we're dying out here. You guys are dying out there. The economy is tanked. I don't see it coming back, at least not this year, maybe next year. I don't know. The last thing we need is a bunch more regulations and everything else. And I'm going to ask, and if I need to, I'll be happy to get on my knees, government shares responsibility in where we are today, but I'm begging you, please, get government off our backs. Keep the regulations off our backs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Drummond. Next, we have Ms. Sharon Taylor.
Thank you. Thank you for opportunity to speak today. I'm Sharon South Taylor, and I only wish I could be as eloquent as Kathy Tinsley and Margaret Ramsey. I didn't come prepared for a five-minute speech, but I had the pleasure of serving on the Land Use and Environment Subcommittee, and it was a very diverse group, and I can assure you we spent many hours of debating back and forth about what we felt like should be included in our section of the comprehensive plan. And I know that the planning boards spent many more hours discussing what part of our section should come out, and I know that they did make some changes too. And I'd just like to say that I really support all the work that all of the subcommittees did, and I would like to ask the county commissioners to please pass this plan. It's a guideline, and I'd like for you to, and we included things that we felt like would be used as guides, just so that the county commission didn't have to repeatedly go back and try to figure out, okay, what's available to look at this problem, what's available to fix, and we tried to put things in that would give you ideas to research and ideas to look at when the time came to address different issues. And so I ask you to please adopt this plan and use it in the future as you make decisions on my behalf, on behalf of the rest of citizens in Macon County.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Next, we have Paul Paulson.
Some of you may know I work for the Land Trust Mahomes in Cowee, and I'm glad to, the last speaker made it clear, I thought that it's a wrong meeting, this is not about the transportation plan, it's about the comprehensive plan. After what happened over the last fifteen years and the stresses in the communities in Macon County today, and the stresses in the economy of Macon County today, it would be absurd not to plan ahead. We need to take care of our local assets in order to build a stable, new economy going forward, and this is only going to happen by working together and following some framework, and this plan offers such a framework. As Ms. Ramsey said earlier, we'll continue to debate going forward and maybe take different turns on the roadmap. After we've been debating the last fifteen years, and some of the debates have led to some wonderful things, I need more track and serve, an energy for heritage-based development in North Macon County that really is nowhere else in western North Carolina do you feel that going on. The debates helped change through Sadi's bad idea for a proposed two-hundred-unit RV park and flood plain above Iowa Bridge, which now we call Gibson Bottoms again. And the debates have allowed things like a wildflower to happen, ember for a long, long haul to figure out how to heal the mountains, because it's not just wildflower. All over the mountains, we have roads that are falling apart, that have been abandoned. I did not help in developing this comprehensive plan, but I did read it, I did bring it. One thing the plan is, is comprehensive, and it is, that's the idea of it, and it's that way thanks to the hard work of an awful lot of people who volunteered an awful lot of time over the last years, as you gentlemen well know, and it's because they care a lot about Macon County. One thing the plan is not, is not obligatory, it is not regulatory. I think most of the speakers have recognized that, but anyone who would suggest it is, just has not written, not read the way the plan is written. It's a vision. The plan encompasses a vision for Macon County based on values of living and working in this magnificent valley surrounded by these unique mountains. It's based on values that believe in building good, safe towns, values that believe in preserving our best farmland, as Kathy Tinsley pointed out, but believe in conserving our wide resources, that believe in protecting rural heritage, that believe in not ruining our mountainside. And I cannot believe that as a county, we do not all agree about these values. I appreciate the hard work of the many who volunteered their time to put this together, and I appreciate the five commissioners who agreed to take on the job of leading our county government forward. Let us know how we can help. I urge you to adopt the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Next, we have Mr. Dwight Benson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, board, for allowing us to have some input into this comprehensive, long-term plan. Let me first begin by saying I do believe that it is very important that our county must plan for the future. Me and my friends, neighbors, fellow citizens have spent a great deal of time and brought many ideas for this plan to the table in the past couple of years on this issue. I've read through the proposed plan and have found many items that I believe have married. I've also found many that are extremely troubling to me. In my profession as a real estate appraiser here in Macon County and most of the surrounding counties worldwide, twenty-four years in my lifetime of residency here, I have personally experienced many of the problems identified in this plan. Perhaps I'll digress back to the plan itself. The most confusing word in this plan is heritage to me, and that word appears to be the thread or catchphrase used throughout the document. American Heritage Dictionary defines it, and I'm going to read the number two definition. It says something passed down from preceding generations or a tradition. That appears to be the one that was most like what was defined or used in this document. Reading, reading through the document, it appears that that definition is the one intended, sure. Tradition. From talking to those around me from all backgrounds and political persuasions, the word that they most often think of or what they consider to be the definition of mountain heritage is really culture. On page six, the definition of mountain heritage appears to be restricted to the traditions of honor and pride. Those are quite notable, and we should respect those, those traditions. Have not been able to find where the plan promotes what most of them in this county would agree to, that is, culture. While this may seem to be a given by many that worked extensively on this plan, it appears that by either intent or by overlooking this driving force in our local social fabric, the plan truly misses a great chance at preserving our mountain heritage, which cannot be separated from our complex culture. Most of the people in this room, as well as those in our neighborhoods, agree that two of, if not the biggest parts of our heritage is our fierce independence and our recognition of our God-given freedom. The mission statement begins in its first sentence, "Work together as Maconians to create a dynamic plan that will guide long-term growth and development within the county." The key word to me here is the word guide. A guide may give direction, but there is no implication that to guide is to regulate or require. A guide is a giver, not a taker. I found that much of this document centers around the taking. While much of the document does address some good points and acts as a guide in some key areas, it is based on premise that there is a lack of regulation and that there is a need for more regulation in our lives. Therein, I find a major break from protecting the heritage of the county as well as acting as a guide. I find that the planning document spends more time on fixing what we see rather than treating the underlying problem of what we don't see, or in this case, what can we do to fix our part of the local economy and reduce the cost of the needed services that can be administered by our local government. This would be, place our local government in its true role as a guide or a giver, as I previously stated. There are maybe some who want to regulate or control, or in simple terms, limit development for our area in the future. This comes at a time when unemployment is at the highest level in thirty years, and that is just the reported unemployment rates. New home starts are at a low, and today news releases state that new home starts were down nationally eleven percent from last month. I don't think we need any help in limiting development at this time. If anything, how could this county best provide incentives to jumpstart housing and get more people to come here? In this area, this plan, in my opinion, is greatly counterproductive. I find that the land use and environment section emerges from the intent of plan and becomes more of a call for regulation, loss of freedom, and most of all, loss of our true local heritage. I believe that the plan fails to show valid evidence of the need. Neither does it weigh the cost to the economy or individual freedom. All this is based on what I consider, and I wasn't, didn't know the time limitations, but the data that was used in this appears to me to be skewed because it is ordered that, as the previous speakers have spoken about, and that it's almost impossible to make a true and a valid statistical projection on data that, as we know in this room, that fails to meet what is really going on in our, in our country, especially in our county at this time. So I would urge you to send this back for review until such a time that the data could be supported and we can get current information to make the viable plan.
Thank you, Mr. Bill. Thank you, Goffey.
First off, as a taxpayer, I'd like to thank the committee members for all the time they put in on a volunteer basis. I'd also like to thank the staff for the time they put in, and a special thank you to Derek Rowland. I know that that position sometimes you feel like you get kicked around a lot, but this county appreciates what he does. And thank you, gentlemen, for commisioning this process. I'd like to run through a short list, sort of a small sampling of some important things that share something in common. The town of Franklin, center of our local economy where many of us run our businesses. The National Forest Service lands where we love to hunt and fish. The road and highway systems that connect us to opportunities beyond our region and connect others to us. The Greenway, where locals and visitors alike take their families for recreation. The Appalachian Trail, that brings so many visitors and so much revenue to our county. And our local churches where we worship, our local businesses, which are the backbone of our economy. All of those things were born of a vision, a plan, and hard work. As a matter of fact, it's hard to name another aspect of our lives in which we pause even for a moment about having a vision for what we hope to accomplish and a plan for doing it. Yet time after time, we find ourselves in meetings like this pretending we can take vision and planning off the table and still achieve what we hope for our family and our businesses. The truth is, the choice is never about planning or not planning. There are always plans in the world. Plans by DOT, plans by the school board, plans by hospital systems, the forest service, emergency services, you name it. Plans by people like me who have to run businesses. So the real choice is whether or not to bring all those components together in a comprehensive plan so that leaders and residents have a clear picture of where we are right now and where it looks like we're headed. The choice is also between whether we plan the future of our local government and the expenditures of our tax dollars in a way in which we all have a say, or we just leave it to others to shape our community and economy however they like. All of our discussions at this point should center around reconfiguring and reinviving our local economy and helping our local businesses and getting people back to work. We can't do that without a picture of where we are and a vision for where we want to go. I encourage you to honor the will of the majority of the county and adopt this comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Our last scheduled speaker tonight is Mr. Al Swain.
I served on the planning board during the time that the proposed comprehensive plan was developed, and as has been said before, dozens of committee members selflessly gave hundreds of volunteer hours preparing the plan. Many citizens took their time to attend public meetings and provide input. Others took time to fill out and return surveys. The planning board and the committees took that input and developed the document that you have in your hands. There's no mention of zoning, and it doesn't have any regulatory authority. It simply takes a snapshot of where we are today, what we're likely to be seeing in the future, and incorporates the work of the committees and the input of the people to map out where we hope to be tomorrow. If we're going to move forward with economic development and jobs in the county, we need a plan. The Board of Commissioners directed the planning board to undertake the task, and I was skeptical at first, but now I know it was the right thing to do. Now I would ask that you do the right thing for the future of the county and for our future generations, and adopt the plan.
We thank everyone for coming tonight. We thank you for all your comments. I think all of us have made a good number of notes based on what we've heard tonight, what, what we need to do next before we recess, and we'll be resessing until later this month for our next meeting. If you don't know, we do have a June second budget meeting scheduled, which is two weeks from Thursday, two weeks from Friday, two weeks from Friday, but it's Thursday, Thursday evening. What we'd like to consider, commissioners, is if we would like to get together to discuss specifically the comprehensive plan on May thirty-first, which is two weeks from tonight, does anyone have a conflict with that night? Two weeks from tonight, May thirty-first.
I think, I think we need a separate meeting to discuss this separately.
Yes, this might be a budget meeting. Budget meeting is that Thursday. This is on Tuesday night, two weeks from tonight, would be, expected topic to be just our, our thoughts and any revisions or thoughts we have on, on the comprehensive plan. Does anybody have a conflict with that?
No.
No.
Okay, we'll, we'll plan on, on the recesses meeting until Tuesday, May thirty-first at six P.M. in the Commissioner's Boardroom at five West Main Street.
Could I ask Travis a question? What I'm gonna ask him is, who is for this plan to ask this? Who thinks we need a plan comprehensive?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think we can do that at this meeting because we asked for sign-ups. Everyone that wanted to speak and those that wanted to speak have spoken, and at this time, we're going to recess this meeting until May thirty-first, but you're certainly free to contact whomever you want, and anyone in our county, of course, is free to contact any officer. I think you all, I think our emails are on the website, our cell phones on the website, our home address, and what kind of cars we'll drive, I think is. Feel free to contact any officer over the next two weeks if you have comments or questions or more than happy, and I think I can speak anymore, and say any officer more than happy to entertain any conversation you might have. Yeah, Commissioner Bill, just to make sure if you haven't read it or you want more information, you can download it off the website. You don't have to download it, you can just read it off the website, Macon County website. It's maconnc.org. You go to maconnc.org and you can read the whole comprehensive plan in its entirety as it currently stands. There are also copies at the library, and I think there are also copies here at the county offices. And also at the planning office. So there are plenty of places where the information is readily available to you.
Mr. Chairman, we point out that the whole document is the hundred and sixty-four pages, but I asked for this and they did it on that website. If you go look, the entire document is there that you can either print or you can scroll through and read, but also the recommendations that came from each group is a separate document because most of this is background information and that kind of thing. If you want to just go and see what the recommendations are, you gotta kind of put that on there. Like we asked, it's the bottom of the page. You just click that and the recommendations will pop up. It's a lot shorter to read if you read that in a few minutes versus a few hours.
Thank you, Commissioner Corwin. If we, gentlemen, have no further business, we'll recess until May thirty-first, six P.M.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I'll get seen.